It's called to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, February 7th, 2018 at 9:00 AM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of January 17th, 2018, and bills for payment on January 26th, February 2nd, and February 9th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Are there any repository sales today?
Good morning.
My name is Karen Chamey Grayson, and I'm here for the property at 260 East 26th Street. The lot at 260 East 26th Street.
Okay, what are you gonna do with the lot?
Seeking avenues to rebuild on that property.
To rebuild? Do anybody on council have any questions? No questions? Okay, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last time, are there any more repository sales? That takes us into citizens to be heard. And before we start today, I want everybody to be mindful, be respectful. I know we have a lot of people here who wants to talk about the viaduct, but please be respectful to everybody in talking. And also at 9:30, we have to take a break for a public hearing, and then after that, we will resume. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Jason Brendel, 4131 McCollum Avenue, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16510. First and foremost, I'd like to say, wow, we have a packed city council chambers, even though we just broke the seasonal snow record right now. I mean, yesterday, we had a blackout in downtown. Well, this morning, we woke up to a whiteout. So, we just broke our record right now. So, that was just one thing. But first, I'd like to say that I was on Pennsylvania Cable's news network after the governor's budget address discussing on how the governor, Tom Wolf, mentioned how Pittsburgh and Philadelphia were picked to be cities to be Amazon's second headquarters. I pointed out that we need to create an LGBT-friendly Commonwealth with passing the Pennsylvania Fairness Act, and the Human Rights Campaign State Equality Index is low, just like Erie's that I gave you, that packet at the last meeting. Now, there are close to over 500,000 LGBT citizens across the Commonwealth. Now, the main point I'm trying to make is, is that Erie's LGBT community is lagging. And I know I've given that packet, and I know I've talked about the Human Rights Campaign being, showing that there's the lowest in the Commonwealth. And if we pass the Pennsylvania Fairness Act and update the policies of the Human Rights Commission to show that we are a diverse community, we need to seriously look at that because if we want to attract businesses to Erie, we need to be updated with our policies, with discrimination laws in that matter. Second thing is, to address how we can create a truly LGBT-friendly city, is to draw up an ordinance of a gay conversion therapy. My former colleague, David Moore, the president of Pennsylvania Equality Project, he was my former leader of marriage equality for Pennsylvania, may have sent you petitions that he has gotten for gay conversion therapy. I mean, last week, State College, Pennsylvania, Center County just passed gay conversion therapy. City of Redding, Allentown, those same-sized cities like Erie have passed gay conversion therapy banned. And I think that we need to address that, and we need to make sure that all of the minors and young LGBT members of our community are looked out for because times are changing, and we need to update these policies and laws. And also, I would like to talk to you about the land bank. I talked to Mr. Grover, if that is how I pronounce it, I'm sorry if I mistakenly said that. I talked to him about my 50/50 compromise tax plan when I ran for city council, and he liked the idea and wouldn't mind exploring it down the road. And my 50/50 compromise tax plan is developing mini grants to the citizens of Erie that want to take care of their neighborhood or take care of their property, and giving the money back to them so then they can say, hey, this is my neighborhood, this is my house, this is my property, let me have a little more money if they're struggling. I mean, the east side needs a little bit of help, we all know that. And then, I have a packet for Councilman Winarsky, since he is the liaison with the Erie police, if I'm true, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This is my sensitive documents about my investigation on the fact that the Zone Dance Club is a nuisance bar because of narcotic activity that is going in and out of the Zone Dance Club. Now, everyone knows me for the fact that I ran for city council. There was a picture posted of me engaging in an activity, and the question is, is that where was that picture taken? Well, I have evidence that Mr. Brawley said that he was a harm reduction therapist. He's not licensed. And Allison Scarpetti of Greater Erie Alliance for Equality Legal Counsel defended him, and Greater Erie Alliance for Equality also tried to get me off the city council ballot. Now, if we're trying to be an open and accepting and welcoming city and bringing everybody together, I think the backdoor politics of Greater Erie Alliance for Equality, Northwest Pride Alliance, and Erie Game Use needs to be looked at, and here are evidence into the fact that the opioid crisis is rising in the LGBT community. Doesn't matter what you say, I have evidence, and I have hard evidence. And today, after the city council meeting, I'm going to the Erie FBI office to talk to my agent that I've been working with for the past couple of years. And I also have two CEOs of web conferencing, web conferencing, oops, sorry, but I'd like to give this, so if you could please give this to the police so then the vice walk and look at this. This is gonna help us, this is gonna clean up Erie and help the LGBT community to be a more, better community that we need. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Diane Esser, and I'm a member of the Pennsylvania Association of Environmental Educators. And Sister Pat Lupo, who we all know and love, reached out to the environmental community. So, what I'm about to say is, in all seriousness, the issues of the viaduct, and we'll kind of start there. And everybody received this by email yesterday, so if you open up your emails and see Diane Esser, and I have one for the mayor. Does the mayor usually sit somewhere in here? Does he usually, no? Okay, well, there's one for him too. Thank you. Okay. It sort of addresses Mayor Schember, so I'm gonna kind of go with it. Mayor Schember, you recently won an election, and new expectations for a brighter Erie was envisioned. Erie, a city with high poverty and blight, and the hot topic of the McBride viaduct. I would surmise that when you spend a day watching the people that cross the viaduct, you won't see, you will not see a demographic in a nice suit or coming and going from an expensive home. I would surmise, if you follow that pedestrian, he doesn't possess a vehicle, and the viaduct is an important pedestrian connection for him or her. The viaduct represents an Erie demographic who needs a mayor who understands the absolute needs of the pedestrian or biker walking that connection. Mayor Schember, your election was hard and passionate work, seen to fruition. Your constituents are fighting to save the viaduct and be a part of a great vision, and making that change too, and bring it to fruition. But there is a fracture, and they are blindsided and not aligned with your decision of demolition. That's for certain. If contractors begin demolition, it will also be the demolition of tremendous efforts and tremendous spirits to save something that connects more than a pathway of concrete. It is a concrete connection of communication to bring vision to reality. It is a connection that can be created by a mayor aligned with the demographics that he serves. Keeping the viaduct and all that it represents is likened to me to Lincoln trying to fight to unite a country. For all things good and great are worth a fight when it's for the good of the whole, whether it is the north or the south, or whether it is the east side or the west side. While I understand, Mayor Schember, that you enjoy your jogs on the bayfront, you are working your way through significantly unhealthy toxins. And this is solid reporting that I'm including in this, that I include, everybody has this. There's reports from the American Cancer Society on vehicular toxins. I wouldn't put my hamster on the highway on a regular jogging basis because of the toxins. Diesel exhaust is one of the primary contributors to particulate matter, PMs, or called PMs. Gasoline contains several toxins such as benzene and formaldehyde. Motor vehicles also generate particulate matter. You've got the tires, you've got the brakes. So, these toxins, these particulate matters are on a highway more than any other street. And besides, Pennsylvania is known for not having the best infrastructure for green and toxic removal through green air mitigating, green infrastructure, whatever. So, these components really contribute heavily to this particulate matter, which is so unhealthy. We know that these pollutants can cause, they're toxic to human health, particularly children and susceptible populations like your elderly or asthma. As environmental educators that begin to look at the reasoning of the McBride viaduct being demolished, I am submitting reports on air quality that should convince you for the health, and there's also safety issues, that would convince you that the viaduct is a safer and it's a healthier route. There's also 186 report in here, page report on particular matters. As an environmental educator, I feel a definitive and a moral responsibility to teach these statistics because any infrastructure that can compromise the health is not on my list for the good of the whole. Thank you so much.
I'm Sister Mary Miller, the Emea Soup Kitchen, and this is my first time speaking. But I'd like to speak on behalf of a public hearing for the viaduct. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know much about bridges or architectural structures, but I do know a little bit about the human soul. And I know the importance of beauty. That's why at the soup kitchen, we have curtains on the table, flowers, curtains on the windows, flowers on the table, and good art on the wall. Beauty is important to the human soul. And I've seen examples of antiquated bridges transformed into beautiful walkways, beautiful parks. And if that east side area needs anything, it needs a touch of beauty. And I'm gonna yield my time to Sister Mary Lou, who has something better to say than I. Thank you for your time.
Sister Mary Lou Kanaky, I'm a Benedictine Sister. I live on the 600 block of East 22nd Street, the home where I grew up, east side girl all the way. About 12 years ago, four sisters, myself included, moved into the 600 block of East 22nd Street, then a neighborhood of drugs, violence, and abandoned buildings. The neighborhood was not unique in Erie, but it was one of the worst. Working with others, we renovated abandoned homes, cleared out the drugs houses, the prostitution, the street brawls. We planted trees and bushes and opened a sister's house for after-school programs for children. But when we announced that we were going to build a poetry park in the neighborhood, people wanted to know, instead of spending money on a poetry park, why not open a daycare or a soup kitchen or a job training center for the poor in the inner city? And the answer to that question is, the Benedictine Sisters of Erie have done all those ministries and found them good, but not enough. People ask the Benedictine community the same thing when we opened the inner-city neighborhood art house 25 years ago. Why an art house for the poor children? Shouldn't you be feeding children who are hungry and helping them with homework and providing after-school sports programs instead of teaching them how to play a cello and paint with watercolors? Yes, yes, we should do all those good works with children, and we do, but that is not enough. Food for the body is not enough, said Dorothy Day, founder of the Catholic Worker. There must be food for the soul. If we strip the inner city of beauty in the name of survival, we starve the people there of a vision of the possible in their own lives and ourselves, of a vision of the truly beautiful in them. Beauty uncovers the lie of violence, despair, and lack of hope, and helps us imagine a world beyond our present reality. I believe the possibility of an imaginative, beautiful, renovated McBride viaduct is another such opportunity to give east side families food for the soul. Maybe it's true, to restore the viaduct will cost more than tearing it down and putting in a connector highway, but we have new cost estimates now that other figures have emerged. What's the harm? What's the harm in hearing all the information at a public hearing? And even if it costs more to renovate than to demolish, well, that's still a choice, isn't it? If we're only talking about money, I suppose most people would say, it's cheaper to tear it down, let's do it. But if we're talking about more than money, if we're talking about more than money, after it's structurally reinforced, I like to imagine legions of talented Erie artists, dedicated environmentalists, and innovative gardeners working side by side with hundreds of young people from the east side to create this bridge of hope, a bridge whose paths are filled with paintings and inspiring words, with small gardens of flowers and gardens of food. And I imagine these artists, these environmentalists, these gardeners, and these youth getting paid. This is an ideal summer job corps for youth, an ideal mentoring program. If we're talking about more than money, if we're talking about honoring history, about turning a wasteland to a work of beauty that can build neighborhood communities, lift the spirit, soften the soul, and sensitize the human heart, then we have to ask ourselves, are those human intangibles worth our investment? So, let's have a public hearing to hear the facts and determine if beauty and her sisters' imagination and creativity are what the city chooses for tomorrow's children. In the end, beauty will save the world, Dostoyevsky wrote. Let's have a public hearing. Let's see if Erie wants to start making that beautiful world a reality. Thank you so much.
We're gonna have to stop. We have to continue with our public hearing, and then after the public hearing, then we will continue with citizens to be heard.
Are you all set, Cecilia?
All right. Pursuant to the provisions of zoning ordinance number 80-2005 and the proper legal advertising, the city council will hold a public hearing regarding the request for amendments regarding mobile homes and mobile home parks today at approximately 9:30 in council chambers.
Step up to the mic.
Good morning, council president, esteemed members of council. My name is Jake Welsh, chief zoning officer and secretary of the planning commission of the city of Erie. I'm here today to read the recommendation of the planning commission regarding the amendments to the zoning ordinance. City of Erie Planning Commission, at their regular meeting on December 19th, 2017, completed their five-month review of regulations, or lack thereof, within the city concerning mobile slash manufactured homes. The planning commission was tasked to make a recommendation to the city council for any appropriate amendments to the zoning ordinance to permit such land uses with proper safeguards and restrictions. The proposed amendment is the result of those efforts. With regards to the proposed amendment, the planning commission voted three to one to recommend approval of the amendment for the following reasons. The amendment addresses a deficiency in the current ordinance. All land uses are required by the municipality's planning code to be permitted in the city. Permitting mobile home parks in the R3 High Density Residential District is consistent with the R3 district's objectives. And finally, the amendment is consistent with the Erie City Comprehensive Plan. Respectfully submitted.
Are there any questions or concerns from council?
Madam President.
Go ahead.
So, based on this, in practicality, it would be, are, these would be permissible where?
In R3. Currently, mobile home parks are permitted in the RLB district.
Okay. And our RLB district, just so people know, that's like 38th Street is RLB on the east side and part of the west side, so those would be exempt now from mobile homes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions from you?
Anybody else have any questions?
Madam President, is there a limitation on the size of the mobile home?
The size of the mobile home itself, no, not at this point. However, the, a portion of the amendments does address the design standards for the mobile home parks themselves, which were not present in the current ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, so, if you have a mobile home, you're only allowed to have it in a mobile home park? Is that what you're saying?
As currently, yes.
And the change?
The change essentially is defining, updating the definitions for mobile versus manufactured homes, which were currently kind of lumped under one definition, so those definitions have been separated, so they each have their own recognition. And also, removing the mobile home park as a permitted use in the RLB district and moving that permitted use of mobile home parks to the R3 district, and establishing the design standards for mobile home parks, mobile home lot sizes, setbacks between the mobile homes, and things of that nature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. President, these homes, these would not be the ones with, when you talk about manufactured homes compared to the ones that would be towed in, if they were towed in, they'd have to be covered then?
Part of distinguishing the definition does then distinguish between mobile homes, which essentially are transportable, versus manufactured homes, which are not intended to be transportable.
Now, the ones that are transportable, they will be permitted then, or?
Correct.
But they'll have to be properly sheathed and everything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We'll get back to you. Okay, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this change? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this change? Last time, is there anybody here to speak in favor of this change? Is there anybody here against this change? Is there anybody here against this change?
Madam President, Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. It's not a for or against, it's for the good of the order. Can we get a clarification about mobile home versus what's classified as a temporary structure? And for example, a contractor's job office, which is essentially a mobile home turned into an office, that's not a mobile home, that's a temporary structure. Does the code address that, Jake?
Not in this amendment, no.
Not in this amendment?
Those are distinct.
They are distinct things. Does the zoning office see any problematic issues with that particular type of structure when it's used for commercial instead of residential? Has there been any conflicts?
No, typically, you're correct. I mean, they're temporarily located on a, they're not existent for purpose.
Yes, and it has a deadline. It can only be there for so long, then it has to be pulled off, and it's permanent structure or no structure in its place, correct? Okay, I thought it was important to know the difference, thank you.
Okay. And last time, is there anybody against it? Okay, thank you. We'll resume, our citizens to be heard.
Concludes our public hearing.
I'm sorry, it concludes our public hearing. Now, we'll resume to citizens to be heard.
Morning, council. Richard Wagner, 42nd state. I'm concerned about a couple resolutions that have been passed in the last couple of weeks. The first one being decriminalization of small amounts of marijuana. Does anyone on this panel know what 30 grams of marijuana is equivalent to? 30 grams of marijuana will make 90.3 gram personalized-size joints and fill a Glad sandwich bag to the top. If you are in a group setting, you can roll the .8 gram variety and pass it amongst two or three of your friends. 90 single-use joints is not a small amount. I have to ask myself, who wrote the requirement? Why grams? I think most dealers use the English system and sell those one-ounce bags, which conveniently fall under the 30-gram limit by just over two grams. It was also stated, we don't want to stop anyone from going to college or joining the army. Let me suggest a few other occupations that I personally wouldn't want someone high on marijuana doing. A pilot, conductor of a train, taxi driver, how about a school bus driver, a heart surgeon, firemen and policemen, just to name a few. Second resolution gave me pause. It was a cost savings associated with the hiring of a solicitor on a per diem basis instead of a yearly salary. This one's pretty simple for me. Mr. Carley would have cost us $150,000 in salary and benefits for 2,080 hours' worth of work, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks in a year. If we were to consult our per diem solicitor for 2,080 hours, the cost for that will be $260,000. That's $110,000 more for the same hours of work. Folks, you didn't save any money, you wasted it. I hope you all realize that probably in the next two years, we will need the services of the solicitor's office even more than we did in the past. of the solicitor's office even more than we did in the past. Land banks, regionalization, rental inspection will soon be tested in the court system, and yes, Florida. And we still haven't determined the outcome of the HUD audit and how it, how it affects the CDBG distributions. If at any point in our city's history, we will be solving or creating some very complicated legal situations that will require a great deal of time. Lastly, as we start to discuss land banking in the city, I have to suggest that we learn from our prior mistakes. The four items I'm going to mention, all can fall into the category of a land banking scheme. First and biggest, the GAF property. We took a blighted manufacturing building, spent $11 million to acquire and remediate it, and now according to Mr. Wells, there's been no interest in the property. Second attempt at a land bank was started by the Redevelopment Authority under Mr. Elliott's watchful eye. That occurred at Peach Street between 12th and 14th Street. It was a signature item under Mayor Sinnett. It was sold to us as 140 housing units. It not only removed blighted property, it even took the wrecking ball to some useful properties. The third land banking attempt, I'm really not sure what agency instituted it, but it's the Savacchio Industrial Park. Again, it has attracted one tenant over many, many years, and since they're empty to this day, except for a printing company. And the fourth and smallest land bank is a McAllister property located at the east side of the public dock owned by the Port Authority. No interest, and since they're idle. When you look at the acquisition of property, it isn't the only concern that one has to look at. And the rush to for, to the forming of land banks will just be another waste of our money unless there is an end user ready to utilize and develop the property. And in closing, community benefit agreements. City Health, City Council has to consider themselves to be enablers. If a CBA stops one development from occurring in our area, it failed its mission. The true benefit from any of these large construction projects lies in the employment after construction. We all have to work to make sure that every obstacle is removed and every action that needs to be taken are utilized to make our city more attractive to development. And thank you for your time.
Good morning, council. Especially Ms. Lemus, thank you, good to see you here. Also, Ms. Schoff, Ms. Allen, and President Errington. I wanted to note a couple of things this morning. First off.
Did you give your name and address?
Thank you. Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Euripia. Other cities are beginning to emulate Erie regarding our decriminalization of marijuana. I've received word that several series, cities in the east side of Pennsylvania have now taken up the issue because Erie had the courage to do that, and I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to continue to offer my appreciation of your understanding of the community benefit agreements and your support to this point. Obviously, we would like to see that continue. I do stand in support of a public hearing on the McBride Viaduct and giving people a voice. I think it's very important, there's other people speaking about that, and certainly I lend my support to their voices. And lastly, I want to stand for equality. I'm so proud of our city council now that the people have elected individuals that look like our city. This is a very big thing, and it should be followed through with all our public services, our fire department, our law enforcement, et cetera. I think it's a big deal to the city, big deal to the people, and I want to applaud city council. Now that you have a city council that looks like the city, I'd like it to be an understanding that whether you're black or brown or white or whatever, women, men, we need to act with equality. We need to understand that we each have something to give and to allow other people to give it and not to stifle that. It's only when we rise as one are we going to achieve and be the best city that we can be. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam President, City Council. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. It was not lost on me, this is a day that has some important implications for the McBride Viaduct, and the meeting was started at precisely 9:11. Let me try and clear some of the clouds away on what you're exactly deliberating on. This has nothing to do with the Buffalo Road work that PennDOT is doing. There's all this dangling of east-west pedestrian safety, the Buffalo Road intersection, that has nothing to do with the viaduct. It, that is a PennDOT fix to a bayfront highway that ravaged through the east side, and they're trying to mend problems on the east side. So please don't let them distract you saying the viaduct is part of the Buffalo Road job. It is not. It's even owned by separate people. The viaduct is a city-owned property, Buffalo Road is a PennDOT property. Next, I'd like to clarify, what we're talking about is an investment on the east side. Clear and simple, it is 5% of what is roughly in the area of 1.5 million investment, of which 95% is coming from federal and state. So you're talking about a $72,000 investment from the city. How are you planning to invest it? Are you investing it to remove an existing $15 million or more asset in the viaduct? Or are you investing it to stabilize a $15 million asset in the viaduct? You've heard testimony previous to mine, when the viaduct exists because of the attention paid to it, it has now drawn activity from the community that has not cost the city a penny. We've had multiple cleanups on the viaduct that has not cost the city a penny. We've had music, we've had dance, we've had poetry readings, we've had refreshments and interviews of walkers and bikers using the viaduct. None of that has cost the city a penny. It has become a rallying point for the community at no expense. There is the concern about, well, if we keep it, we're going to have to spend more to keep it. And that has been proven to be false because there are all kinds of matching grants waiting to come in as soon as City Hall takes demolition off the table. So we are talking about preserving an asset of not only value towards the connectivity of that side of town and value towards the impoverished residents that use that bridge to get to work, to get to school, to get to recreation, to get to church. We're talking about an investment in a bridge that becomes a rallying point for the community. The expression "bridge of hope" is not whimsical, it is substantial. The east side needs a win. So what we're asking, the lift we're asking you to do is very light. We're not asking you to decide today to save the bridge, we're asking you to give that community that's rallying a fair and open voice to state their case. There has been so much misinformation. We all know about the statement that there's only 600,000 that's reallocated to the repair, when it's actually 1.26 million, more than double that. We have heard the comment, 250 per household. Right now, under the funding formula, 250 per household for over 41,000 households in Erie is over $10 million. What project is that about? It's not about the viaduct. The most expensive estimate to repair the viaduct out there right now is the one that is not published, but it was given to the New York Times reporter, printed out at 5.9 million. I don't have a copy of it, but I was able to review it with the New York Times reporter. And of that 5.9 million, 3.5 million is spent on replacing the eight-inch concrete deck and the complete replacement of the asphalt surfaces on the north and south gates. 3.5 million. When I've read that estimate, my estimate for the similar repair work he's repaired, he's suggesting, is he's at 2.4 million, I'm at three, I've padded my estimate. The 3.5 is a waste of money because they're trying to replace it for a highway. We are no longer a highway, we are a bike and pedestrian way. So that is a significant difference, and their estimate actually corroborates mine when you take off the table the unnecessary work. So there's more to talk about, but thank you for your, your time.
Just to let you know, I've turned on my own timer, so I have a little warning when I'm done. My name's Freda Tepfer, I'm a Certified Orientation and Mobility Specialist with a Master's in Orient, in Adult Education. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. When I ran for city council, and in the year or so prior to that, I brought up the issue that we need to have an open and above-board process to notify citizens of vacancies on boards and commissions and to solicit applications. I support any member of the city council who questions the submission of a nomination by another member. I, I did not elect any of you just to ratify what the rest of you said without examination. So any, anybody's attempt to demean or belittle any council member for doing that, I think is disingenuous. I'm, request the council to take action in the form of a public hearing on the viaduct in order to correct the longstanding emissions in this process of approving, of proposing the demolition. In 2010, a letter was prepared, the scoping minutes of a meeting that John Tushak and others from the city and the PennDOT participated in, and I can provide you with that at the hearing or email it to any of you. And that, at that time, the three alternatives were presented in that meeting, essentially the very same alternatives that were supposedly developed in the LRK process after public involvement to develop those alternatives. What process occurred? The way that those, the process occurred, a purpose and needs were developed. Only north, only east-west pedestrian safety concerns were mentioned. However, later on, after the fact, a crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector was added. Surely, that is a north-south pedestrian safety concern never addressed during the LRK process. Also, in the process of doing the LRK study, air quality was examined in basically two ways. They looked at the potential air quality concerns related to the actual act of demolition, what constituents would go into the air. They also looked at the changes in the air pollution occurring because of the construction of the Buffalo Road interchange. There is nowhere in the LRK study that they looked at the air quality impacts upon the pedestrians forced to use the Bayfront Connector as their main means of north-south pedestrian access. This is a significant failure in the study, it is a lack of environmental justice in this process. The way things have been added on with this project, it shows it, they're jury-rigged. They claim that we asked for a wall. In your packet, number, resolution number 13, calls for the addition of a barrier fence. I don't know if that's a chain link fence or a wall. I don't know if you know which it is. But this, we're told that was added because we have objected to items that could come across the fence. If it's a solid wall, anybody walking along there is going to be terrified of walking in an open tunnel with nobody being able to see in to tell whether people are safe inside there. I wouldn't walk there, and, and we don't give people an option if we tear the viaduct down. So we've added this fence, we've added this crossing, we never evaluated air pollution. Only one alternative was designed to address all the purpose and needs, and that's the preferred alternative, the one with the Buffalo Road interchange, the demolition and the barrier to keep people from jumping across the Bayfront Connector. Rehabilitation of the viaduct could have been an alternative with the addition of the bayfront, the, the, the barrier for the jumpers and the Buffalo Road interchange, but no such alternative was proposed. I am, I am asking you to provide us with a public hearing when, when these questions can be posed, when, whether the wisdom of the addition of, of an eight-inch concrete base to the, to the viaduct for pedestrians is necessary. We, we ask you to table the resolutions related 11, 12, and 13 to reimbursement, awarding the contract in this unknown fence. I respect your judgment and thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Doris Sapola, 8640 East Lake Road. I'm a social justice advocate. I spoke at the last city council meeting, and I am here again to urge, urge that you have a public hearing. I know that it first started with the idea of concern with vehicular accidents, that the children wouldn't be safe. But in reality, the pollution is even greater threat to their life. Those children will be walking that bridge, not just once a month or once a week, every day to school and from school when the traffic is heavy. Not only that, they're young, and therefore the cumulative effect over the years of their life. Their lives will be shortened. Now, whether you want to call it economic development, whether you want to call it duh, I don't know, growth for the city, in the end, if you don't do something to impact the lives of the people who live, who live and work here, then of what use is it? You know, whether it's systemic racism, whether it's systemic urbanization and the way it's done, in the end, we're talking about the lives of people. And the people on the east side have been oppressed, let's not joke about that. And I think it would be wonderful if we would have a bridge of hope and a new beginning that these people are taken into account and that you make yourself responsible for it. Thank you very much.
I'm Waleka Singh, 440 West 9th Street. I'm here to support the viaduct. Look outside, look outside at that weather. Would anyone want their child or you walking along that viaduct? That's very important. One thing we should want to do, to be honest, to be honest, I'm not going to read the whole excerpt from Jay Brennan, but he wrote something in the Erie Read, Erie Reading, Reader. And he said, "Towards the end of my tenure on county council, I support a new revenue stream for bridges and railways that will raise millions and could be used to leverage millions more in federal and state funds, knowing it could be used for the viaduct without hurting other projects in the works. The municipalities would not been down our door to rate this fund. In fact, they have, they had to be dragged into it a bit. But it seemed a wise choice, given our city's price tag for implementing Erie focus and the growing infrastructure needs in the region, particularly quarry and inner-city suburbs. These active funds currently allocated for demolition could easily be used by City Hall to costly-factly retain the bridge for pedestrians. It is a political choice, not one of engineering, and that political choice is made by whoever sits in the mayor's seat on City Hall's fifth floor. No other elected, no other elected official, bureaucrat, or agency official holds that power. I do not fault Mayor Shimmer for adopting this, his predecessor's case for demolition. If in, if in fact, that is the best decision for the neighborhood and broader community. But I believe the whole community would be rightly disappointed if the new mayor did not depart from the old mayor's subpar and downright flagrant opposition to taking a case directly to the people." Let's understand something, folks. We have politicians who for reasons only they know are working to override their lives of the people in regards to the viaduct. lives or the people in regards to the viaduct bridge. You have to twist your brain to believe that walking along the Eighth Bay Connector is just as safe as walking across the viaduct bridge, but it is different when it is not your children or you. Why not put some pride in this project by all in the community being a part of beautifying it in every way that communities can do? We could be proud of the project, and it also would allow us to become progressive thinking. Erie is very anti-progressive when it comes to vibrant thinking, anti, anti. And if you look at cities across the country, these cities, including Cameron, New Jersey, and other so-called bad cities, this is what they're doing with their old projects. They are not tearing them down. They're using these projects to unify, beautify, and retain some pride in that community in that it gives the idea that we are able to retain the idea of community. How do you maintain the idea of community when you turn down a workspace that could be used? I'm only asking that somewhere we accept the fact they have been experts who have clearly stated, "There is no reason at all to tear that bridge down." None, none. This is from experts. So let's be honest, folks, we're talking about people here and bringing the community together, and I'm praying that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Good morning, members of city council and staff. It is a great honor to be in these hallowed halls. I certainly respect everything that you do, and I know about the troubling problems that you confront and the difficulties in making decisions. But I am here to speak on behalf of the viaduct, and I have a particular point of view. I agree with all of those who have also...
Excuse me, you have to state your name and your address.
Yes, excuse me. My name is Judy Lynch, and as you know, I am not a resident of the city of Erie. So the question is, is what standing do I have to be before you? But I really think that there is an issue that has not been expressed this morning that is paramount, and I agree, as I indicated before, with all of those who have already stated their concerns about preserving the viaduct and how instrumental it would be. I agree with all of those points that have been made previously. But I want to bring to your attention, particularly when you sit here in the city hall, which is a result of tearing down one of the most historically important facilities in the history of Erie, the old city hall. And I brought with me something that I think that all of you have seen. I have a feeling all of you might have it in your libraries, but I think it bears to give it some attention from time to time. It is John Claridge's Lost Erie. And all you have to do is walk around the area of the city of Erie, and you can see the result of tearing down one historical structure after another. And what we do when we do that, we lose our understanding of our history, we lose the connection of today with yesterday, and we lose, in a sense, a potential for the future. So I'm here to tell you, in my opinion, that the viaduct, the McBride Viaduct, is extraordinarily architecturally symbolic and important structure for the city of Erie. And if there is any way that it can be preserved and maintained and presented to a future generation, it should be, because one of the things it did is it connected neighborhoods. And I know that there isn't anybody here in this room, or certainly here before me, that does not know the importance of connecting neighborhoods in the city of Erie. And so it connected what was in the southern part of the city with the northern part of the city. We need to keep those connections. The north-south connections are absolutely vital to the psychological health of this community. So I point that out to you. In addition, when you destroy something, when you destroy something like many of these structures that are listed in here and put in their stead a parking lot, you have zippo. You have destroyed nothing, you have destroyed but created nothing, you have built nothing, and the end result is nothing. But really, when you destroy your history, it is less than nothing. So I call to your attention the importance of preserving the historical characteristics that make Erie area Erie, and tell us what our history was and the importance of today and going forward to tomorrow. Thank you.
My name is Susan Moyer, and I live at 615 Poplar Street. I have watched, I have followed the discussion about the viaduct for the last, what, three or four years since it was first proposed that we tear it down. I remained neutral on that discussion for many years and have heard many arguments for tearing it down. A couple of weeks ago, the Save the Viaduct group hosted a town hall meeting at the Jefferson Education Society. My husband and I went because I wanted to hear what the arguments were for saving it. I wanted to hear what it would take to save the viaduct and create a beautiful walkway, a pedestrian walkway, and a park on the east side. I think most of you know that I've spent many years working with east side neighborhoods, trying to help, trying to help them improve their neighborhoods and beautify them. For seven years, my husband and I maintained the traffic triangle garden in front of Wayne Park, and I know I've worked with Bob Mursky for many years to bring children out to plant flowers every spring. I was interested to hear Sister Mary Lou, because she talked about the importance of beauty and beautiful spaces in our neighborhood and how it soothes the soul. And it reminded me of one afternoon or one evening, Mark and I were weeding flowers, or weeding weeds at the park, the traffic triangle, and we had a gentleman stop and pull over, and he said, "I drive this street every single day, and every single day I feel better because of this flower garden." And we need more places like that on the east side. I'm not sure what the right answer is, whether it should be torn down or if it should be saved, but I think that people deserve to have a public hearing on it so that you can hear the reasons why it should be saved. And I ask that you do, you vote for that public hearing in favor of it, and I ask that you delay signing a contract for the demolition until we carefully looked at all sides of the question. It is important for people's voices to be heard. And I have emailed you all, except for Ms. Arrington, about this issue. I heard back from three of you. I hope that the people today are able to convince you of the importance of a public hearing. Thank you.
Sister Michelle Shrek, House of Mercy, 2005 Woodlawn Avenue. And I'm speaking on behalf of the East Side Grassroots Coalition and the House of Mercy. And I just want to comment, because we have a lot of people here today. I've been at several of these meetings now and spoken about the viaduct, but I, one thing that I'm noticing is the amount of people here today is probably four, five times what we've had in the past conversations. So that shows me that more people are becoming interested in this topic, are expressing their views to you. And then you look at the agenda that you have. You have a resolution to accept the demolition bids, and you have a resolution for a public hearing. Time is becoming really critical, and this issue is coming before you because we know how the mayor stands, and it's in your hands now. So I hope that you're listening, and I know that you're aware of the number of people and the interest in this issue. And I urge you to support Sonia's resolution for a public hearing. My understanding is we need four of you to do that, and there are six of you, so you could all do it and stand up for at least letting people have their say, and, well, seven of you, sorry. So anyway, please support the resolution.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Seiner. I live at 633 East 7th Street, and I'm just here to ask city council to approve the resolution to have the public hearing on the viaduct and also to delay the demolition plans. I travel by bicycle and by foot. I use the viaduct very regularly, multiple times per week, and yesterday, I was on my way to work, instead of taking the viaduct, I took the Bayfront sidewalk on the highway, which I usually don't do. I was almost hit by a truck on the 12th Street crossing because it turned when I had the pedestrian right-of-way. And also, as I was crossing the bridge, I was sprayed by road grime, slush, and other particles from the cars that were driving past. I also noticed that on the fresh snow, there was a black film, like little grainy film, which I believe is the exhaust particles from all the traffic that is coming down the Bayfront Highway, and those are the same particles that anyone taking that sidewalk is breathing in whenever they take it. And the viaduct is far enough away that I would much prefer to take that crossing than the one that's right next to all the traffic. And I think that the cause of preserving the viaduct has really brought together a lot of people and engaged a lot of opinions and hope, and that's why I ask you to consider having the public hearing and just allow people to speak their voice on the viaduct. Thank you.
Sister Anne McCarthy, 600 block of East 22nd Street. I coordinate Benedictine's for Peace, and we just wanted to be on record that we support the public hearing and a delay in the demolition of the viaduct. I realize that we are coming late to this, but we really believe that there's new information that has not been given serious enough consideration when the decision for demolition was made, specifically the consideration of the walkway bike path, that that was not given consideration sufficiently. Also, Erie Refocused has really refocused our vision, and considering the viaduct as a walking, biking pathway fits with the Erie Focused. It fits with community involvement, it fits with biking walkways, green spaces with a livable community. I've been to the reports from PennDOT on the viaduct, and they were not public hearings. I am not, there has not been a public hearing, and we really believe that that is really important, to really look at this anew. Personally, I bike and walk in the city. Children in our neighborhood on East 22nd Street have been asking me to take them off the block for a bike ride. I would take them to the viaduct. I would not take them on the bike path on the Bayfront Highway. It's just, it's not safe. Thank you.
Good morning, city council. I'm Eric Brozel. I live at 1024, 1025 West 24th. I've lived in Erie most of my life, and I've been a cyclist and a pedestrian all my life, and I personally have used the viaduct numerous times. It just seems like a much more convenient, safe, and comfortable way. I'd like to encourage you to improve it or to consider improving it, and, you know, I'm really happy about all the new people that we have in city government now, from the mayor on down, and also the fact that we now have a planner, which we hadn't had in the past. And I hope with all those sort of things, we can take a better look at all of our resources that we have and consider saving the viaduct. Thank you very much.
My name's Abdullah Washington. I live on 7th and Parade, and, you know, I'm a supporter of the viaduct, and there's no secret about that. And one of the things about, one of the things that's going on now in the country, obviously, is there's a big elephant in the room politically. But what I was told is that the reason the donkey symbolizes the Democratic Party is that it has long ears, so it tries to listen to everyone, right? Now, for the past, for decades, the Democratic Party has been dominant in this area for decades, and 24/7 Wall Street releases this article saying that this is the worst, the worst city in all of America for black people. So you own that. You have to own that. Now, when you're poor, you don't have power over a lot of things, and in fact, you have to deal with a lot of institutions, and they basically tell you you're doing everything wrong. They close your schools, shuffle you around. You can ask any of the previous generation of black people here, they remember when the black community was actually moved and dispersed throughout the city. Now, these kids are using this bridge to go to school, and you brought Mr. Meredith here to say some things about what the governor would like to see happen in this area, and that's great, and we already have a whole lot of programs and everything, but one of the big things, especially when I went to go to do the police training when I first got here, I realized people aren't participating in that. And one of the main reasons why is that there's no trust, because every move that I make as a person of color or a poor person, I'm told I'm not good enough. Well, these kids are doing something to better themselves, and the community is living and using this bridge. Why not validate them if you want trust, if you want people to use these great programs and improve the city and improve their situations? Tell them not only that you listen to them and that they're valuable, but by doing so, that you can, you trust them, and they might trust you, right? I mean, there's two false positions, one of them that, oh, I can support this because people want, they want vehicle traffic there. Well, that's not going to happen, unless you have five or $6 million, apparently, since we're not open on the table about our studies. We all know that's not going to happen. But what's possible is that we can save this and preserve it so that the kids can use it and see it as a sign that they are trusted and welcome and respected to grow and live in this city, and the city can become what we believe we all say we want it to be. Because if that doesn't happen, then it's just yet another sign, especially for the young, that they are not welcome to live and grow and prosper in this city. Thank you.
Good morning, noble people. I'm new at this. My name is Blaine Gamble, and they call me Brother Juju. I represent a program called HIPHOP. HIPHOP is the acronym for Human Initiative Program, Helping Others Progress. It's of the design to deal with, I think, the most outstanding issue in America, is the at-risk youth. I hear the noble people who are concerned with the physical reality of the city, the needs of the physical structures of buildings, viaducts, and things of that sort. I think the basis for all communities, the development is, is first, the development of self-veteran. of self-veteran, self-veteran of the youth, the future. I'm the founder of this program, HIPHOP. I was concerned because when I first came here five years ago, I never thought that three years after living in the city, it would have a body count of 13 murders in the city, east side, west side, youth killing one another. And nobody seems to be concerned about them. They are the future. I labored with the past administration. I went with the synopsis of the HIPHOP program. I say I have a program structured of the design to deal with at-risk youth because they are the future. Nobody would hear me from the City Hall, all the officials. The count is higher now. The despair, the hopelessness with the youth, the at-risk youth in the city is higher now. No hope. What are we going to do about it? I see that we're concerned about the physical structure of the cities. What about the structure of the youth? I have a friend here, and he's a co-founder, a young man. Would you please stand up?[696.82][696.82](Applause). That's the future, him and his baby. That's my goddaughter. Incidentally, I'm from Camden, New Jersey. I know the streets. I know what's needed here. And I'm not angry, but I'm upset, and I'm hurt, because you're turning your backs on the future. You got young black, Spanish, poor whites, hopeless. Nobody's trying to do nothing to help them, really. The development of the self is first. You can restructure everything in Erie, everything in New York, everything in Camden, physical. But if you don't deal with the human beings that got to live, come through these edifices, live in the neighborhoods, if they don't have the right mindset, then they'll carry down. If the economical conditions and the social conditions is not conducive to their growth and development. We have this program, it's of the design to work with the public officials, City Hall, judges. We have a program of the design to have conflict resolution. When the brothers is out there shooting and killing one another over drugs and whatever else, we have a program of what we call Alpha, Street Male Mentors. Alpha Street Male Mentors, guys who have been in the prison, guys who's living the rough life. I'm working with these young men. I'm an elder. They respect me. We sit, we go from house to house to have meetings. We don't have a building. And everybody's talking about they want to do this, to do that, to help the city. I want to help the city by asking you, City Council, to help me, Blaine Gamble, founder of, and the co-founder, help us. Help us with the HIPHOP program. While y'all's building, the restructuring, renovating city structures, help us to restore the hope and the hopelessness that is abundant among the young, the forgotten, the at-risk youth in this city and throughout America. So please, consider what I'm saying today. I live at 642 East 19th Street. My number is 814-790-1287. If you want to help us, please get in touch with us. Hear us out. Read the program format. It's a treatment program.
Excuse me, sir. Your five minutes is up.
Thank you. Who are you, ma'am?
I'm Mrs. Arrington.
Mrs. Arrington.
President, Mrs. Arrington.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.[906.69][906.69](Applause).
My name is C. Williams, 400 block, East 2nd Street, poet laureate, Erie County, 2014 to 2016. I'm gonna keep it real short this morning because I have a feeling you guys are gonna hear more from me later on. I'm not a structural engineer, but I can count. 100 people a day use the bridge. 200 pedestrian trips a day for the last seven years is more than 500,000 journeys without a reported incident. 500,000 journeys speaks volumes to me of the safety of this bridge as a pedestrian walkway, and it can be made safer. I am not a historian, but I am a student of history, and I understand the effects of credit rationing, blacklisting, redlining, and disinvestment on Erie's east side and its correlation to Erie being listed as the worst city in America for people who look like me. I understand what it's like to see the least of us treated as if we don't exist. I want to live in a city that works for the least of us. The people who use that viaduct use it to get to work, to get to school, to visit friends and family, and sometimes just to watch a train go by. They are the least of us. Investment in the viaduct is a bridge to a city that works for all of us. A public hearing shows a willingness to listen to all of us. To be heard, to be counted matters. We matter. Delay the demolition? Let us have our say? And show us time has come for change, for hope. Show us that this administration is willing to embrace the east side's desperate need for both.[1040.04][1040.04](Applause).
Hard to follow up. My name is Michael Wardell. I stay at 2314 Satsfrast Street. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who come down to speak. You're well spoken. I'd like to thank you, City Council, for letting us come and express ourself, and I also agree with having a further topic on the bridge. My heart goes out to how the citizens of Erie are feeling right now. I think they're making a valid point on how they're feeling. And as a voter, as one of the voters and voted for members of council, I agree with that, having further discussion with that. I'd like to also thank Mrs. Arrington for her promotion as president and the rest of councils, the new members of council. Congratulations for being here and sitting in City Council. So I don't know you personally right now. I hope to speak to you. As the lady told me before, one time I was down here, we should stay afterwards and see what City Council has to say. I hope the mayor look back at this forum today as everyone spoke. I know he's out of town. It'd be good for him to know how the citizens are feeling. But I'm also down here, on the previous thing I talked about, I'm always talking about transparency. We got transparency right here, right now. I'm glad all the citizens are here, and City Council's here again. My problem is, I came down here before, and I was talking about the police force. There's nothing bad about the police force. I want the city of Erie be transparent like any other force now that's moving in the 20th century with cameras on the police. Like I said, Lawrence Park has it, and Lawrence Park is smaller than Erie. And, you know, we need that. We need that, for the good of Erie. We need to be always transparent. And I know that council had talked about it, and it seemed like it's going that way. The mayor, the new mayor also talked about it. I think that's a good idea. He's talking about it. That's one thing he can do besides making a park beautiful. He can do something legit, you know? I've really felt that the mayor, it was talked about, it might have a problem of how to look back at the camera and this and that. It might cost a little something to look back. We might not have the knowledge of looking and working the cameras. Well, if Lawrence Park can look back and they have it, using these cameras on their force, I think we got knowledgeable officers that can look back and work the cameras, or we can look into that. We can really look into that. That's more important to me. And there's some other things I'd like to talk about, but I don't have the time to talk about right now. These are the two most important things to talk about. But I will be talking about some things that's going over in that courthouse that ain't right, you know? Anytime somebody can work in the DA's office and steal all that money for six years and get a slap on the wrist, and people can go to rob a bank or do anything less than that, they get all the time in the world. But she got people speaking nice about her. She's working in the DA office, stealing for six and seven years, stealing money. You know? We need to think about that, people. We really do. We gotta be more honest. We gotta, we gotta be truthful here. We gotta be about God's business. You know what I mean? God is looking down on right and wrong, and you better set your heart on doing the right thing these days, because the time is coming to an end, and you're gonna stand before God. You're elected here to hear the people's voices, all right? You heard their voices, you know how they're feeling. You're not here for the mayor. You ain't here for just to stamp everything that anybody bring through here. All right? Thank you.[1359.38][1359.38](Applause).
My name is Catherine Eichenlob White, and I live at 2722 East Avenue. And I'm here to speak in support of Resolution Number Two, a delay of the demolition for a public hearing. I actually happen to be one of Erie's most recent taxpayers because I moved here from Crawford County to actually purchase a house on East Avenue. And I want to be a good neighbor. I was out shoveling my sidewalk this morning twice. I want to be a responsible citizen, and that's why I'm here today. We could have found a good place to live anywhere around this city, but we chose Erie's east side, not because of its property values, but because of its people and as an investment in its future. I've actually been working in this, within the city area and its diverse communities since 2001. And although I don't know much about its politics, because I've been busy, I've been reading its pulse. I wish I'd been paying more attention, because I would have realized that this process has not been fair and transparent. I have been reading its pulse, and I've come to believe that some of its most important assets aren't its buildings, but its people that have found a place on this bay, especially those who stay, not because they're risk averse, but because they value all that's best about Erie. We have so many of them in this room. These are our city treasures. The organizations like the Sisters of St. Joseph and the Benedictines and Mercyhurst, who helped to build this institution, they saw down the road because they believed in the people that were gathered here. Anyway, Erie's east side needs a public hearing. We need concrete evidence that you are listening to proposals that call for preserving the viaduct as a centerpiece, a gathering space, a pathway that connects neighbors to neighbors and neighborhoods to neighborhoods. That hearing has not yet happened. So as an east side resident, new on the block, I actually know now more than half of my neighbors because I believe in neighborhoods. And I'm not asking for favoritism for our neighborhood. I'm actually asking for fairness. I think that the viaduct is the least that the city could do for a neighborhood that is losing its hope. But this is a new day in Erie PA, and I've come to know that, that if, when we can trust each other, we can have a hope for the future. I wore this necklace today because it says backspace. And whether or not you're using a typewriter or a computer, there's a reason for backspace. It's not a failure to say, let's stop, reconsider, and make sure that we're on board together. I'm asking that you use the privilege of your backspace to do right by the people of the Erie east side neighborhood. Thank you.[1583.23][1583.23](Applause).
Madam President and members of the council, this is the third time that I've spoken to the council.
You gotta state your name and address.
Of course. Why do I assume that I am known? My name is Bill Lacy. I live at 4642 Highview Boulevard in Erie. And I wanted to speak for the resolution that Madam Arrington has put forward today. It's hard to know what more could be said to demonstrate the need for an open meeting. I was on the bridge as a boy in second grade when it, when the first bridge was dedicated, and I believe I spoke about that the first time I was here. As I grew older, I came to realize what all that excitement really meant and what the viaduct really meant. And all that was reinforced suddenly yesterday. I was at a service at St. Anne's. I came out, I crossed the street, and went to open my car door, and I looked up. The sun had illuminated the street, and the first thing that came to mind as I saw that the viaduct, with its gracious sweep up and over, concealing the horizon, dull would he be of soul who could pass by a sight so touching in its majesty? Now, of course, the viaduct is not Westminster Bridge in London, and Matthew Arnold wasn't writing about our viaduct. But I realized that over the years, having that destiny, having that sweeping view, that upward thrust is sort of aspirational. And that's what I had come to understand, you know, as a boy in that neighborhood, as the immigrants and others in that neighborhood now live and who are looking to better themselves, that there was a pathway through the east side, and that that bridge was a product of enlightened interaction between federal, state, county, and city government. In fact, the mayor's grandfather, Tom Flatley, was instrumental in part as a politician of the time in that bridge's creation. I won't reiterate the arguments that have been made today. They seem to me overwhelming. I know that the mayor has rightly concern for costs in the city, for costs... I know that the mayor has rightly concern for costs in the city, for costs for maintenance, and those have to be addressed. And I know that he's absolutely right, that the thing that the East Side needs more than anything else is jobs. I grew up and my dad and the other men gathered and walked to the hammer mill and walked to GE. Our mothers weren't home. It was a great bringing up. We didn't have a lot, but it was a wonderful bringing up. And everything emphasized self-reliance and reaching out and working with others. And that was the, the culture of the East Side at that time. So I would, I would not ask you to stand against the mayor. We're not asking a decision today on the viaduct itself. But Mr. Winarsky, I know you've already declared your position on that, and you have every right to do so. My neighbor, Bob Mersky, with whom I occasionally see with his beautiful dog coursing the neighborhood, I know both of you have taken that position. But what I would ask you to do today is, is vote for the process. Not vote, vote for the process. Not vote against the mayor, not feel, you know, we're not, we're not asking you to change your minds now, but vote for a process to ensure that the beginning of this term, this mayor, your service on council, will not be tainted in any way, that the whole prospect of openness will be realized by your vote on this issue. Thank you.
Michael Keyes, 36th and Reed Street. I have two really quick stories. One is about the LERTA expansion. The mayor's rolling out a new LERTA plan that is gonna encompass the entire city, and he wants to go to a full 10-year LERTA. And so would I like to speak to you about the bird in the hand. Right now, we have over half a billion dollars worth of construction that's already on the books, that's already gonna take place. Why would we defer their taxes until 2019 and never collect a penny between now and then from Erie Insurance? He wants to expand it to the whole city so that includes never getting a penny from the Scots that, and so, and that also includes, if we are gonna develop our Bayfront, the new people who go down there also won't have to pay any taxes till 2019 or 10 years after they build whatever they're gonna build. And so I wanted to get out in front of this and say, the bird in hand, we need to think about that because he's gonna say prosperity in the future, but when I did the numbers, that's $15 million a year for our city and county. And so with that $15 million over 10 years being deferred, that's more than our city budget for a year. And we do not need to defer these things that are already on the books, that already are taking place. We do not need to give them that type of tax break. I support, you know, maybe a LERTA expansion for single-family homes or for residential properties, but not for conglomerates and industrialists. My second story is about, say that somebody walked up to you today and said, if I gave you $20,000 to improve your home, or I could give you $20,000 and I wanna knock your home I think most people would say, I'd take the $20,000 to improve my home because if you took the $20,000 and they knocked your home down, you'll be left with nothing. And that's exactly what we're gonna be left with on the East Side. Once they tear down the bridge, we're gonna have an expansive view of a junkyard. We're gonna have absolutely nothing. And I think that we ought to take that in account as far as aesthetics, as far as, you know, they say, they're talking about beauty, but that's the furthest thing from beauty. We're gonna have that at the end of our block. And we hope that you support Ms. Arrington's resolution because that's not what we wanna see. We don't wanna walk out of our houses and see a junkyard. Thank you.
Counsel, thank you for your patience today. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I want to also acknowledge Renee Lamas, who is here. I, I know that all of you care about the city and wanna do what's best for the city, and Ms. Lamas and I worked together years ago on a project to try to affect some positive change in Erie, so I recognize that. I'm also recognizing Kathy Rozdick, who is here with us today, our new city planner. And I'm thrilled that our new mayor has hired a city planner. We need one. And if we had a city planner back in 2013, I believe we would not be in the situation that we're in today. I want to also acknowledge that I think that your job on council is an excruciatingly difficult one. You are elected at large, and you have to deal with every issue. Your, your cell phones are online, and people are calling you 24/7. I also know that you are paid relatively little for this full-time job. You don't have individual staff supporting your work, and I think that you're flooded with information, making it very difficult for you to take the time to read through and to consider all things. Therefore, I think that there's a tendency for you to rely on trusted people to help you make decisions. What we're asking for with a public hearing is an opportunity to actually give you information that you have not had a chance to digest. This is not a public hearing. This is an opportunity for individual citizens to share some information with you, but it is not a formal public hearing where information on both sides is presented and you're, and you're able to ask questions and get to the heart of the matter. We have seen continually that misinformation has been in the news, repeated by this administration and the former administration, and the, so it's in fits and starts. I still hear people are telling me it's gonna cost every household $250 to fix the bridge. That's ludicrous. We've proven that. I also want to say again, specifically, I know all of you care about the East Side. I know that Councilman Kwiatowski, Winarsky, and Mersky have lived on the East Side. I know that Councilwoman Witherspoon, you just opened up a beautiful basketball court on Pennsylvania Avenue. Beautiful. Councilwoman Arrington, I mean, I'm very familiar with your long work with Matt V and efforts to improve and create opportunities for East Side youth. And, and Councilwoman Schaff, I, you know, you were with us on the, on the viaduct itself, actually picking up trash. So I know all of you care. It's not a matter of bad or good or not caring. It's a matter of not having all the facts in front of you that a public hearing would actually create. I also want to comment that the, the Senate administration is over, okay? His closed-door decision to demolish, though, is still hanging around. Why? The, the new administration promised to listen and be transparent, but in this big, huge issue that's facing us, he's not living up to his pledge. So the council must call for a public hearing. As Fred Tepfer outlined previously, the demolition plan had predated the 2012 study. We will show that in the public hearing. The administration and PENDOC claimed that there have been public hearings, but there have been no opportunities to challenge the information provided by the engineers or to introduce information. Engineers don't understand. The city deserves a public hearing. Every city planner, we brought five of them here, that has said to make a thriving community, it must be walkable. No city planners were involved in the viaduct study, only engineers. And our new mayor made his statement that he wants to tear down the viaduct before our city planner was even hired. Demolishing the viaduct will make Erie less walkable. The city deserves a public hearing. If you have heart pains, don't go to the dentist, call 911. If you have a city planning issue, don't turn to an engineer, talk to a city planner. Five national and international city planners all recommend keeping the viaduct. The city deserves a public hearing. Demolition ignores city planning principles. It will harm economic development in Erie. It will hurt the children and schools. The viaduct isn't falling down. The cost to repair the bridge for non-vehicular use and cost to demolish are about the same. We have the money to fix the bridge. Let us prove these things at a public hearing. The administration says that if people wanna keep the viaduct, they should band together and raise the money and fix it themselves. This directive is like some ridiculous fairy tale. A decade ago, the bridge behind Strong Vincent High School where I lived was in need of repair. No one told the folks living on West Six, figure out how to fix the bridge yourself. It was taken care of by the government. That's why we have a government. The city deserves a public hearing. And then, I can say one more thing. Again, I encourage you to read your colleague's essay in here, which is Mark Daniele, and former councilman, County Councilman Brennan's article marked in orange, and I want to ask you please to table the mayor's three resolutions trying to get pre-authorization, and please support council president's resolution for a public hearing. Thank you.
Charles Mock, 648 East 43rd Street, pastor of Community Baptist Church. And I want to first, again, just reiterate what my colleague Lisa just said, which is thank you for hearing us. Thank you for your patience in all of this and hearing us. And I want to congratulate the new councilwomen who now join our president, Arrington, on this prestigious council. Let me, having said that, say I stand here not to fight the mayor. In fact, I have had a couple of conversations face-to-face with the mayor, as so many others, and I even prayed for the mayor a couple of Fridays ago as one of the members of the African-American Concerned Clergy, praying for his vision for the city, praying for the things that he laid out during his campaign and the things that he has taken seriously since his election. So this is not about fighting the mayor, it is about fighting for that which is right. It is about fighting for those who cannot always be in the right place at the right time to fight for themselves. It's to voice our concerns on their behalf. And so, having said that, I stand as a clergyman of this community, and as you know, all clergy are in the salvation business. And our business has to do with reconstructing, repurposing, rehabilitating, rejuvenating, and also reinvesting. We do that all the time by our work, not just in the church, but outside the church. We are in the salvation business. We're in the safety business. Our business is safety in the city, safety in the suburbs, safety for all children regardless of race, color, and creed. And safety is our concern, as safety is your concern. And many of you have a history of champion children, and that's why I'm, I'm a little concerned about why this rush to demolish, when we have decades of support, either as a mother, a father, or as a city council person who has been in the nonprofit business. So I, it just boggles my mind about this rush to demolish after this issue came up in 2010. And here we are, 2018, and then one of the last things our former mayor wanted to do was try to shut the door on this viaduct bridge and not have other new members have the opportunity to weigh in on an issue that they themselves may not have been involved in at the time. And let me say this while I'm saying that, because we hear people saying, well, where were all the voices back in 2015, 16, 17? And my response is, well, probably while those meetings were going on at an inoperative time, many of the leaders, many of other people were fighting against the violence in the community. We were at meetings trying to save the high schools and the elementary schools. We were at meetings trying to make sure that the state gave our poor community the money they needed to support our children. We were probably at other meetings wondering how we were going to unify ourselves as a city. So if we came late to this rodeo, it's only because we were riding some other horses at the time. And political governance, we're about that. We have to be. I hope all of you recognize the fact, regardless of your faith tradition, I hope you recognize that to be an elected officer is to be a part of an ordained position. Therefore, whatever you do, you do it under an ordained position because God has ordained government to support his own values or her own values, if that helps you. Lastly, trust and transparency is an issue, and that's a safety issue also, because as goes trust, so goes everything that is built on trust. And as I stand here and as you sit there, you know that against the background of this viaduct, in Washington, DC, we have two parties at each other's neck, like the Hatfields and the McCoys. We know that transparency is an issue. We know that there was a report that was sent out that had not been properly vetted. And because of that, there now has to be a minority report because so much was left out of the first report. So transparency is such an important issue that as I take my seat, I take my seat saying, here we are with the new government, new electors, and for the sake, those of you who are veterans, for the sake of your new council colleagues, maybe you should vote for our president's resolution for pausing. And I'm not gonna say backspace because a pause is all we're asking for, a pause for the cause. And what is the cause? Truth, justice, and righteousness, fairness. I don't even know whether or not the bridge should be torn down because of fake facts, if I could use Kelly, Conway's phrase. And that's an oxymoron, isn't it? Fake facts. But people in this audience do not know whether or not what we're being told is the truth. That's why we need a public meeting, support this resolution, so that you can start off
City consul, John Schubert, lived at 2413 East Avenue over 50 years. Been a resident, quite frankly, on the East Side for 76 years. You know, down, my daughter lives in Lancaster, just outside. They have 59,322 people that live there. Within the last few years, they've had less than a mile, three brand-new bridges over the railroads. It's really kinda interesting because, again, we have Nego Road, they have a new bridge not too long ago. There's 17,234 people in Harbor Creek, and there's 39, 3,982 people at the last census in Lawrence Park. They have a new bridge. They run up and down. There's not a lot of cars. There aren't cars go over. We had, if you remember, over 4,000 cars a day going over that bridge. And Millfair got started after we got started on our bridge. And for some reason, Millfair got pushed ahead. They've never had a bridge there. I asked them, how many cars a day? They said, we're not sure. They come back with me, they said, four to 600 cars a day. Four to 600 cars a day in Mill, for Mill Creek. There's 53,000 people in there, in round figures. We have close to 100,000 people in this city. We keep talking about blight and how it is easy to get around. We keep talking about blight and how it is easy to get around. Yes, we've lost transportation like GE, we've lost Hammer Mill, but we're not looking into the future. The future of us and our children down the road, they need transportation, they need a pedestrian walkway as well. The money that they want to spend on walkways and that is far going to exceed what it would cost to rehabilitate our bridge over here. Most of you have lived on the East Side. I know a number of you, I've talked to a number of you. You all have told me you're very much in favor of saving the bridge. But unfortunately, we were giving a lot of misinformation. Again, I was at every single meeting on the bridge. I was at meetings out in Mil Creek. They were all supportive and that, getting the bridge. All of a sudden, they got the bridge, we don't. The figures that they gave us to build the bridge was twice the amount of what they built the bridge in Mil, Milfair Road. Kind of makes you wonder. The, the people, you know, that are telling us this bridge is bad, if we look at our engineering department, it's the same people that gave us the bumpouts and the inefficient lighting here in the city. There's a lot of information that's being passed on to you folks. And like I said, I was at every meeting, and like I said, a lot of it is baloney that they're telling you. Lot of things that needed done are superficial and that. But we have 90%, I was on the committee, again, for that CAC, over 90% of us wanted the bridge rebuilt or a new bridge. And there was over 12,455 signature petitions sent to you folks, and some of you weren't here at that time, of people that wanted to keep the bridge and that. And like I said, we keep talking, I've walked the bridge and I've walked the bayfront. And believe me, I'd rather walk the bridge than the bayfront. The bayfront, the cars, they're going like crazy, they're splashing up on you and what have you. And what I find interesting is, you know, April 1st, we're all going to pay $5 more for every vehicle. That's supposed to be for roads. None of that money is even claimed yet. Each vehicle here in the city is going to be $5 more and that. And we're already paid, I don't know, I think it's two, maybe three times now in our gasoline, every gallon that you put in. That's supposed to be for road structure. We're not getting the benefit here. So again, I just hope that you'll go along with Ms. Arrington's suggestion and tabling this because we do need that bridge. And who knows what the future may be because there's all kinds of money and ad grants. We're supposed to have a new grant operator. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last time, are there any more citizens to be heard? That will take us to New Business, Rose?
Ordinances for final passage. Ordinances for final passage, Council File 15615, official ordinance number 62018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $339,88144 to be received as a transfer from BUDAG, the Bayfront Urban Development Action Grant, to the City of Erie Business Development Fund for purposes of job creation, investment, and economic development in the City of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Kowalski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15615, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 62018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. City Council passed Official File Ordinance Number 62018, finally by a seven, nay zero. That'll take us into New Business.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No.
Oh.
Move the balance of the agenda?
Then we'll do separations.
Separations, okay.
Yeah, separations will come later.
Any separations?
Are there any separations?
I would like to separate number 11, 12, and 13.
Under what?
Under New Business.
New Business?
Under New Business.
Okay. I'd like to separate number two and number four.
I'd like to separate number one, under New Business.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Erie, Erie County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Anti-Corruption Position. Whereas Erie City Council desires to establish as a position tough new anti-corruption laws for politicians, lobbyists, and outside groups such as super PACs. We feel it is necessary to recognize ordinary citizens as important stakeholders in government instead of allowing the undue influence of major individual and corporate donors. Whereas the proper operation of responsible government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible to their constituents, that government decisions and policy be made in the best interests of the community and the government, that public office must not be used for personal gain. Whereas we agree there should be a limit on contributions to political candidates from individuals, lobbyists, and super PACs to reduce the potential for undue influence. Whereas an elected legislator must cast his or her vote as trustee for his or her constituents, not as a prerogative of personal power. Whereas we agree with making laws prohibiting legislators from selling off their government power for high-paying lobbyist jobs and from accepting money from lobbyists. Also lobbyists can either lobby or donate, but they can't do both. Whereas we agree that all political fundraising and spending be immediately disclosed online and immediately disclosed to the public. Also, the Supreme Court's mandate that super PACs cannot donate to political campaigns must be enforced. Whereas we agree that gerrymandering is a detriment to our democracy, and therefore it is imperative that independent redistricting commissions be established. Whereas all political candidates should run in an open primary controlled by the voters, not the political establishment. Be it therefore resolved, or be it further resolved, that the Erie City Council respectfully urges the Pennsylvania legislators to introduce and support anti-corruption legislation in Harrisburg and Washington, D.C., addressing the issues herein described. Discussion.
I separated only because I agree with 98% of this. The only problem I have is the language concerning the open primary. That's a debate that, it's not clear enough to me what they mean by that. In some states where they had open primaries, it did the opposite of what it intended to do, which is it eliminated certain candidates from running. I would like to see the language either taken out on the open primary part, and I would support the rest of this resolution, but to not know what they mean by an open primary. I understand what I think they mean by it, and in some formats and in some states where it is used, it can be used by the other party, because it's just a term that you're using here. Primary means we're still going to have Democrat, Republican, Green Party, everything else run. That's the purpose of a primary. If you have a true open primary, you don't need a primary. Everybody just runs in a general election. But if you have a primary, that means you're still separating parties. And to allow people that are not registered in that party to vote interjects the possibility of another major party actually controlling the other party's election. And if you don't think that's possible, you look at what's happened in other states. So I can't support this resolution as it's worded, even though I agree with the PACs and I definitely agree with the gerrymandering and everything. I just think the language on the open primary needs to be looked at. And before we vote on it, and what we, we should understand what we're voting on, is that you could be actually working against what you're trying to accomplish. Because if you want a true open primary, then you don't have a primary. You just have one election, let everybody run, saves everybody a lot of money, which won't make the newspapers happy or the media, because that's one less election we have to worry about. That eliminates a lot of the PAC problems and everything. But if we're going to talk about having a primary and it's going to be open, you better consider what that means. And I'm not comfortable with backing it as it is. So in its present format, I like 98% of it. It's the other 2% that I can't support, and I'd be hypocritical if I did. But if you're willing to take that part out, I'd support the rest.
Is there any more discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Roll call, Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski.
No.
Mr. Mersky. Mrs. Schoff. Mr. Winarski. Mr. Witherspoon. Mrs. Arrington. This resolution adopts by a six, nays one. By Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mrs. Schoff, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that at the request of Mrs. Arrington, the city clerk is authorized and directed to advertise notice of public hearing to be held before City Council at 626 State Street in council chambers on Wednesday, March 7th, 2018, at approximately 9:30 a.m. in regard to input on the McBride viaduct retention or demolition. Discussion.
Madam President. Oh.
I separated this because I just, we're voting later on in the meeting for the contract. And so, does it then have a public, to have a public hearing after we already vote on the demolition, I don't, I don't see the purpose of that, other than unless we vote to table 12, 13, 14, then this becomes relevant. Until then, it's really, we could have a public hearing and already have made the decision.
That's what Liz was going to ask, to table 11, 12, and 13.
So what order does this come in, though? Can I, can I say something about public hearing first?
Before we...
I think we should probably vote on table one.
No, I think you vote on the public. We start with, discussion on two is right now, and then I believe you can come into further more than I want to.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Okay. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge all my colleagues on City Council and also Mayor Schimber. You know, a lot of people have mentioned the East Side connections here, and I know that they've worked really hard in coming to the decisions that they've made all along about the viaduct. I wanted to say why I support a public hearing and kind of give you some background. But first of all, I also think it's important to know when, when people say, you know, there's a lot of information out there and maybe council hasn't digested it all. Speaking for myself, this is my McBride viaduct folder, and I know that the city council members who are not new have been absorbing this and they went to public meetings. So let's just acknowledge that they did, they did a lot of due diligence, and so has Mayor Schimber. But I want to explain how I arrived at where I am today and why I've decided to support a public hearing. This is not my original position, but I was wearing a different hat at the time. As a board member of Preservation Erie, I voted against a resolution supporting a public hearing because I thought such a hearing was being presented as something that would be adversarial instead of informational and helpful. I thought then, and I still think now, that a series of public meetings would have or would allow everyone to hear the pros and cons of a proposal to transform the McBride viaduct into a pedestrian walkway. The town hall at the Jefferson Educational Society allowed me to hear these new voices and new ideas about the bridge, but also about the future of Erie's East Side. And I think that a public hearing would allow those voices to be heard. I think a public hearing, I don't think the PennDOT engineers would be speaking at it, but I do think that we would have the opportunity to present some information from various experts on the condition of the viaduct. I think we're in an age where, you know, science has been denigrated, so let's not denigrate engineers. I asked, it just, I just want you to know, I have spent a lot of time on this, not just collecting information, but walking under the viaduct, going over the viaduct. Yesterday, I was at the library reading the Erie Dispatch Herald story on when the viaduct was dedicated, and I was glad that Bill Lacy mentioned Tom Flatley because he was mentioned in that story. The Erie Daily Times story is actually hung up in the Heritage Room, but the Dispatch Herald, that's kind of really my roots because I worked for the Morning News, which was a spin-off of the Dispatch Herald, when the, there used to be two competing papers here. Anyhow, I was with Engineer Hank Grego last week, and he pointed out a lot of really bad things happening with the viaduct. Hank doesn't have a, what's the cliche, a dog and whatever it is. Independently, he just, he obviously didn't do a full-fledged estimate or anything, but he, there's a lot of bad stuff that has happened to the viaduct. You realize it was closed in 2010, and what was bad in 2010 has likely gotten worse. There are infrastructures, problems in this city that go back decades. The first story I found about the deterioration of the viaduct was from 1966. And at that time, the Public Works Director, I think it was Bob Waittenich, said, "We need a plan, a three-year plan to fix the bridges in this city." So I have to know the facts about things, and I think that that, that a public hearing would help to reiterate some of those facts, bring new opinions and ideas to light, help people to understand the timeline of how we got from the 2008 posting of the bridge to the 2010 closing of the bridge to the engineering study. I also think that City Council and City of Erie officials, and I think we're, we want you to know this, we have to let people on the East Side know that you will no longer be overlooked, forgotten, and neglected. One of the things I've been thinking about is, I keep thinking about our West Bayfront and how that arm of that organization goes all the way up to 12th and Bayfront. And, you know, maybe we talked about shifting perspectives, such, such good comments from everybody who came to the podium today. And, you know, what's our East Bayfront? How does it go all along here? I made a list of all the assets on the East Side, and this was just off the top of my head, and I thought sometimes you have to change the narrative. In some of my research about how I arrived at the idea that we need a public hearing, there's one thing I think that we've forgotten about. We talk a lot about disinvestment on the East Side. In... In 1999, a new East High School opened. And I want to acknowledge Kaz because he was one of the ones who, at that time, championed making sure that all voices were heard. You remember this, Kaz, that there were two school directors? They did not even want to have a hearing about what was proposed for a new high school on the East Side. They wanted to do it at the Administration Building, which, who knows where it was then? Maybe in the old bowling alley? I don't think they had moved. So Kaz at the time, "No, we have to have this hearing where it's going to affect people." There were school directors who wanted to build a new high school and didn't want it on the East Side. Let's put it somewhere in Central Erie. The fact is that a new East High School was built at a cost of $22 million. Al Roker and Tom Ridge were at the dedication in 1999. There were headlines in the newspaper that said, "Hey, maybe kids from the suburbs are even going to come to the New East High," because it was going to be dedicated to communication and arts and everything. 1999, New East High. Things happened after that. You know, Hammermill, the IP plant closed. You know, you had, somebody mentioned 9/11. You had the actual 9/11 happen. We have to remember that there was a commitment at one time to invest in the East Side, to make it the way it should be. So I just wanted to add that context, that if we can look at our history, and this gets to what Judy Lynch was talking about, if we know what our history is, then we can figure out how to go forward. So it's kind of a long Liz Allen rambling kind of thing. If I was writing it as a column, I would do it in a different way. But I did want to remind people that there was once hope on the East Side at that particular moment when that school opened. I went back and looked, oh, I think it's five minutes. I looked at the stories in 2003, when the old East was actually demolished. And there were quotes from kids about the conditions of the school that they were forced to learn in up to that point. So it's a long way of saying, I support a public hearing. I'm not sure that we will get to the outcome that some people in the audience are rooting for, but we can do this together.
Are there any more comments?
Madam President, as a matter of procedure, would it be possible, and maybe the solicitor can help us with this, to table number two until we address 12, 13, 14? Or 11, whatever, 11, 12, 13?
Yeah.
Sorry, 11, I circled the wrong one. 11, 12, 13. Do you understand what I'm saying? So then, if those get tabled, then you have the public hearing. If they don't, then you don't.
Excuse me?
Do you know what I, so I'm going to make a motion to table this until after we address those issues. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, let me ask this question. Can we make a motion to table 11, 12, and 13? And then go on with the hearing?
Once we get there, yeah. Once we get to those ones, we're, but we're in the middle of this resolution right now.
So do we table two, till later in the meeting, or?
Can you table it for later in the meeting, or?
I'm sorry, which contract are you referring to?
So we're looking at number two under new business. And I would like to table it for later in the meeting until after.
Oh, I understand for the public hearing.
So then for the contracts.
Is that what you want to table, or you wanted to table a contract in the, on the agenda?
They're going to, they're going to do that.
I think he wants to table number two first, right, Bob?
Just as a matter of procedure.
We eliminate until we look at the other three.
Then we'll vote on the contracts or table the contracts.
Oh, I'm sorry. All three of those, okay. I apologize.
I have a motion on the floor. I don't know if I'm going to get a second, though.
Who seconded that?
I know what he's trying to do. I don't understand it.
Do you, I mean, does everyone understand what I'm saying is, if we don't table those, if these go up or down, 11, 12, 13?
I don't know that you're required to table those, depending on the vote, which is before you at this moment. I guess.
I guess the question is.
I don't have my Roberts rules. I apologize with.
I guess it's, can we table something and untable it on the same meeting? That would be the proper question, to make it simpler.
The main order, resolutions, that would be 11, 12, and 13.
They want a way to talk about number two until they vote on 11, 12, and 13.
Yes. Are you planning to vote on number two right now? That would determine whether you would table the other three.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you want to table number two?
And then bring it up later in the meeting.
Certainly.
Okay.
I would table the other three also.
Well, that's, we want to get to that. But procedurally, we're already at two. People, shouting's not going to help anything. We got to maintain composure. I just want you to understand, we are going to vote on number two today. We're just going to vote on it after we vote to table 11, 12, 13. As a matter of procedure, because if 12, 13, and 11 don't get tabled, then there's no need for the hearing.
I'm not sure.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second.
I would recommend tabling two, 11, 12, and 13.
No, you can't.
That doesn't make, well, the problem there is.
We're not in order.
We want to vote on 11, 12, and 13. But the way the numerical, they were put on the agenda, we're saying.
It's just a matter of how they're organized.
I mean, you can still have a, even if we awarded a contract, you can still have a hearing. But it's like, what's it really going to accomplish at that point? So I mean, I guess he's asking, can we really get to, you know, decide, if we're going to vote on the issues, let's vote on them. And then, you know.
I believe if you vote on them, then since they exist now, they would be signed and valid as soon as the signatures are obtained.
Well, I understand that.
So the city would move forward with those.
You know, the hearing, well, the way that was put in numerically, it causes a little confusion, so.
They would be said and done, the contracts, so they would go forward.
Can I ask?
That's understandable.
Madam President, can I ask a question, too? Is it possible, we don't have the Roberts Rules of Order here, is it possible just to change the order of something on an agenda? Or no? We don't, I don't know. I mean, is it possible just to?
We already read this, so that's.
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I understand what Mr. Mersky is saying. He's just saying, table number two, but we're going to come back to it after we vote on 11, 12, and 13. I understand.
And I'm fine, right. And I'm fine.
Yes, today we want to do it.
Yeah, that's the way we want to do it. I'm fine with that.
It's just a procedural thing. It's not a matter of trying to wipe it off.
I can go get my Roberts rules and look at that.
She has her book. She's bringing it. But that's.
I mean, it's highly unusual. Everything happens at one time in one meeting. It's just the way it came, came down from the Commonwealth.
Motion to table or to table till later in the meeting?
Table later in the meeting. Yeah. So the motion would be to table later in the meeting, not table completely.
That should do it.
Yes.
Never had this one.
Leave it to me to screw everything up, right?
It looks like under the Roberts Rules of Order, you are able to lay on the table the resolution number two and vote on 11, 12, and 13, if that's your question. It would be a lay-on-the-table vote.
So moved. Second.
Are we ready for the vote?
To lay on the table.
Okay.
And this is the table, is correct?
This is to table until later.
Okay.
Okay, by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. Motion to table.
If you can, proper rules, you got to define later.
What the?
Later in the meeting. I didn't finish reading this. Okay. May I? By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. Motion to table resolution number two until later in this meeting. Ms. Allen. Mr. Kotowski. Mr. Mersky. Mrs. Schoff. Mr. Winarski. Mr. Witherspoon. Mrs. Arrington. Okay, I'll set this aside. Resolution number four, by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kotowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the Erie City Council respectfully requests that the proper county officials, including the Erie County Executive, Erie County Council, and the Erie County Redevelopment Authority, to considering, to consider entering into a cooperative agreement annually. The gaming money reserved for blight removal transferred to the City of Erie Land Bank to expedite the removal, blight removal process.
Mrs. Arrington.
Yes.
I just wanted to let people know, after speaking with Mayor Schimber, Kathy Rosdick, Mrs. Lamis, and Mrs. Dahl Kemper from the county, I changed this a little bit from what's printed and took out a dollar amount. The objective of this and the will of council is to work in close collaboration with the county and the county land bank. I believe that working together, we can leverage our abilities and our resources for the greatest impact and the best interest of the community. And I think that the intent of the will of this council is to work cooperatively, that when we work cooperatively with the county, things turn out better. And I personally want to thank Carl Anderson, who's been instrumental in assisting on this at the county level. So that's the reason for the change.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen. Mr. Kotowski. Mr. Mersky. Mrs. Schoff. Mr. Winarski. Mr. Witherspoon. Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt by a seven, nays zero. Resolution 11, by Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute the federal aid bridge project reimbursement agreement between the City of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the final design and for the utilities and for the right of way and for the construction of the City of Erie McBride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge. The total amount, the total cost is $2,240,548. Discussion?
Madam President, are we able to table 11, 12, and 13?
We're on 11 right now. If you want a motion to table 11.
11.
Can we have discussion first, if you don't mind? So, Madam President, just to make sure I know what I'm voting on here. So 11 is, which one's the actual demolition and which one is just transferring money? So when we're looking.
Looks like number 12 is for the demolition.
So 12's the demolition. So 11 is just to transfer money from PennDOT to the state, or from the state to the city. And the same with 13 is, and that's to work with the Trans Systems Corporation. That's for engineering work for the protective barrier.
Well, I think number 11 is the demolition, Bob.
11's the demolition.
I'm just reading it. I'm taking my time.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was, which one was which.
Okay. Now, I have separated out 11, 12, and 13, but 13's the lean approval. Number 10 is another resolution regarding the bridge. So did we separate out the wrong ones?
Yeah.
On the agenda here, 10 is PennDOT project related to sanitary sewer manhole adjustment on Grandview Boulevard.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
And then 11 is McBride, 12 is McBride.
Okay.
And 13 is McBride on our agenda.
All right. Well, then I read number 11. So let me go back to number 10, and we'll deal with 11 next. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas the mayor and the city controller have previously been authorized to execute all required agreements to date with all parties as required for the McBride Viaduct Removal Project East Avenue Bridge. And whereas the project has been advertised for bids, a low responsible bid has been received and verified, and the award of the construction phase of the project is recommended. The mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute and award the construction agreement between the City of Erie and Swank Construction Company, LLC, 632 Hunt Valley Circle, New Kensington, PA, for the demolition of the McBride Viaduct and construction of other related transportation and pedestrian improvements as specified.
Madam President?
Yes.
As I listen to everyone today, I hear the issues. And as I listen, it seems like the issue isn't so much the bridge itself as the issue is a feeling, a feeling of being left out and a feeling of being left behind. And my heart is with you. For eight years, eight years, we, because Kaz was involved, Jimmy was involved, pretty much everyone who's, Mel was involved, we fought for the bridge. We attended the meetings. We participated. We advocated. And we've listened. We've listened to PennDOT. We've listened to the people. And we've listened to the people of the East Side. We've had private meetings with Lisa Austin and her group. We've attended public meetings with Lisa and her group. Eight years, we've done this. And it's, my heart says, I'm with you, but my head says we got to look at the reality. And the reality is, and someone used the analogy that you wouldn't tear down your home. Well, we built a home right next to the home that we had. And when you have, it's like my car. My first car, I loved my first car. I had so many memories in that first car. Good ones. And it was your first taste of freedom. But then the car got old, and the car started to break down, and it started costing more and more money. And it was time to get a new car. And emotionally, I was attached to my old car. But the reality was, it was costing too much to maintain and fix up, so I bought a new car. We have a new bridge, right next to the old bridge. And I know it's not the same. And I know that it's not what people, everyone thinks is ideal. But when we're looking at numbers and we're looking at facts, and we're looking at connections, there is a north-south connection, right next to the old connection. And on top of that, we're going to have improvements on east-west connection in multiple places. And so while my heart aches for the loss of a bridge, my head says, this is the right decision. decision for the City of Erie. And thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything? I, I would like to say something. You know, it's two things that I've been hearing about, and I'm gonna be an example for one. Where was everybody at back then? 2010, my son was shot and killed. Pastor Mark hit it right on the nail when he said, "A lot of people wasn't invested in the bridge," because we had so much violence going on in our community, at least for the least first six years after my son. We had lost so many people. And I'd be the first one to say, I didn't even know anything about what was going on with the bridge, because I was focused on my loss and everybody else's loss in the community. But right here, right now, today, my focus is divided up, because I live on the East Side. If you don't live on the East Side, you don't understand, you don't have a vested interest in it. I walked that bridge as a student at East High School, to and from basketball practice. And that does cut off the connection from the North and the South. But at the end of the day, everybody, the bottom line is about the money. How are we going to pay for this bridge? Because I know, sitting up here, the city can't, we can't afford it. And what they want to hear is, where's the money gonna come from? And I think that if we have this public hearing, my hopes is that you have answers to where this money's gonna come from, how we're gonna take care of this bridge. Because that bridge symbolizes hope for us. And if they tear it down, that's just another thing that's gonna depress the East Side of town. We need that bridge. That symbolizes hope for us over on the East Side. If this passes through, and even if we get this hearing, whether they demolish the bridge or not, just saying that we can have this hearing, to me, that's hope. That, hey, if they giving us this hearing and they listen to what we have to say, maybe they might let us turn this bridge into a walkway. But when you ask the question, where have you been all this time? I've been mourning my son and everybody else's child. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can we table 11, 12, 13 and not vote on putting money towards the bridge at this time? And then do the public hearing?
You, you could make a motion.
Can I make that motion at this time to table 11, 12, and 13?
Solicitor, can we do that?
Could you repeat the question? I didn't hear you.
To table number 11, number 12, and number 13. I do not want to vote, I don't want the council to vote on putting money into the McBride Viaduct at this time.
I believe you can make a motion to table...
That's what I would like to do.
Yes, but the full council would vote on that and accept it or reject it.
So you can make the motion.
You make the motion.
I would like to make a motion.
I, I would just question tabling all three at once. Won't they have to be tabled separately?
We can't do it individually.
They voted on all three.
Because we separate.
Right, because we separate. One at a time. Be safe and do it one at a time.
Madam President, then I would do it one at a time, if possible.
Okay.
So to table number 11 at this time.
You say you make the motion.
Asking for a second.
I second that motion.
She's still looking, Sonia. We gave her a tough meeting her first time out.
Yeah. You guys threw me for a loop today.
I don't see a problem with it.
Do you do it one at a time? No way.
I believe the rule says you have to vote on tabling one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mrs. Arrington. Motion to table. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski.
No.
Mr. Mersky.
No.
Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mrs. Arrington. Motion to table fails to adopt. Yays three, nays four. So now we'll go on for the vote for the resolution.
No, we gotta vote.
No, we gotta do, we gotta do 12 and 13. We gotta do them separately.
Well, this motion failed to adopt. We have to vote on the resolution.
You have to take on number 11 first.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, are we ready to vote on this resolution? Miss, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff.
No.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
I forgot to say no, I'm sorry.
No.
It's that whole silent.
Ms. Allen, Ms. Allen is a no.
Ms. Allen is a no?
I'm a no too as well.
I appreciate it.
All right, this resolution will adopt by ays four, nays three. Resolution Number 11 by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute the federal aid bridge project reimbursement agreement between the City of Erie and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for final design, for utilities, for the right-of-way, and for the construction of the City of Erie McBride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge. The total cost is $2,240,548. Discussion?
Madam President, I would like this tabled.
I second it.
Which one we table, number 12?
Number 12.
Number 11.
No, no.
No, this is 12.
12, your numbers are off, Rose.
Yeah, we're on 12 now.
Wait a minute, I thought we voted on number 11.
Oh, okay. No, this is, you're right. This is number 12 for you, 11 for me. Okay.
So you still want to table number 12 then?
I want to table number 12.
Okay.
And I second it.
Sorry, Mrs. President.
All right, by Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mrs. Arrington. Motion to table. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Uh, no.
Mr. Mersky.
No.
Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mrs. Arrington. Okay, this motion fails to adopt. Yays three, nays four. So now we'll vote on the resolution itself.
Mrs. President, for clarification to the audience, this is reimbursement for things that have already been done. And this is so the city can get reimbursed for the money we've outlaid that's already been outlaid for studies.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt by ays seven, nays zero.
No, I'm sorry, Rose. Are you doing 13?
Number 12.
Number 12. I'm going to stick with my no.
This motion, or this resolution will still adopt by ays six, nays one. Okay, by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the mayor and city controller are hereby authorized to execute the project-specific agreement between the City of Erie and Trans Systems Corporation Consultants to Gateway Center Suite 2050, 603 Stanwick Street, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for the demolition of McBride Viaduct Removal Project, East Avenue Bridge, and for the demolition of the structure and to provide for related improvements. Discussion?
I would like to make a motion to table number 13.
Is there a second?
I second it. Let me ask this question first. For 13, Kaz, you said they owe the city money? Is this...
No, number 12 was reimbursement...
Reimbursement, okay.
For money that we had already outlaid. 13, I think specifically addresses the wall that they brought up, some of the people out there, the wall that they're gonna enhance on the bayfront connector.
Is it the wall, or is it, I'm sorry, Madam President, is it the wall or is it additional protective? I think the wall was part of the, the bid, but I, isn't this the additional barrier to protect people walking?
Madam President, the way I understand number 13 is that there's already the parapet there, which is the small wall, and then this will make it bigger so that people, it will direct people to the crosswalk that they're gonna build across the bayfront. That people aren't running across with their bikes and then throwing them over the barrier and then...
And it is gonna be a fence, not a wall.
Right.
They're putting a fence on top of that.
On top of that, right.
By Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Mrs. Arrington. Motion to table. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Is this the table? I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, not the table.
Mr. Mersky.
No.
Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
Mrs. Arrington. All right, this motion fails to adopt. Ays three, nays four. I will vote on the resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff.
No.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Hey, I missed my no again, I'm sorry.
All right, this resolution will adopt by ays five, nays two. We have a wave rules, Madam President. This is regarding the closure of closing and vacating of an alley between West 21st and 22nd, Peach to South. All right, voting on the wave rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the city solicitor is authorized and directed to prepare an ordinance for the closing and vacating of an alley between West 21st and West 22nd Street, between Peach and Sassafer Street, at the request of Brian Payer and Village of Luther Square and VL Holdings with Planning Commission approval and forward to city council for proper action accompanied by the requisite $300 filing fee.
Madam President?
Yes.
When we tabled this, the intention was to look for a community benefits agreement possibility. And after exploring the neighborhood and getting a map of the property that the village at Luther Square owned, it was, we discovered that the village owned everything surrounding it. And so after talking with Erie United, Erie County United, it was decided that this wouldn't be an appropriate place to enter into a community benefits agreement. And so we put it back on the agenda to vote on.
All right, roll a call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Schoff, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that resolution will adopt. Yay seven, nays zero. Now there's the matter of Resolution Number Two that was tabled till later in the meeting.
Do we now need a motion, Madam President, to move it off the table?
Can we pull it? Can we, do we, do we have to, a motion to pull it, or do we have to vote?
Well, we tabled it, I think.
So now can we make a motion?
Well, we tabled it till later.
And it's later.
In the meeting.
So now it's later in the meeting, but can we, do you still want to have a public hearing, or do we have to, do we have to vote it down, or can we just pull it?
You can pull it.
It's up to the maker, I mean, I'm... Right. Well, I would like to make a motion to pull it.
I'll second that. I mean, it's irrelevant, it's...
I'm sorry, did they ask?
It'll be read.
Madam President, I would like to vote that we have a public hearing.
So you'll vote no then, when you, when the council...
Yeah, when she'll turn, you can just vote no.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Winarski, to pull this resolution. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff.
No.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
No.
This motion will adopt. Ays four, nays three. That will take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Okay, we can start with Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things to report. I attended the Convention Center Authority meeting. As everyone saw in the paper, they did not get any responses to their request for proposals for the GAF property, so they're in the process of reevaluating that. They also have, coming up in the next, not 2018, but for 2019, they're already preparing for the renovation of the Warner Theater. They're just waiting on those funds to be dispersed from the governor. They've already been allocated, and they've acquired the property, so there will be enhancements to the stage area, which hopefully will allow for bigger acts and new entertainment to come to the Warner Theater. And I just wanted to address the, two things on the agenda that we passed. The first was the, the new grant process. I want to thank the administration for pushing that forward. This will allow small businesses to obtain $5,000 grants, not a loan, but a grant. These are competitive grants. These are competitive grants, and Chris Groner in our Economic Development Office, he's been working on this for quite some time, and finally we have enough money that we're able to issue those. This is to encourage small business development and encourage entrepreneurship in the City of Erie. We're very proud of that, and also just to thank everybody who's working on the land bank, and again, the importance here is working collaboratively, working together for the benefit of the region. We all know, just from anecdotally, but also from Erie Refocused and Destination Erie, that the majority of the blight is in the City of Erie, and so it only makes sense that we would work together to combat blight, because as we increase the positive in the City of Erie, it emanates out through the county as well, and it encourages people to come back to the city. So we're excited to sponsor that and move forward with that, and I want to thank Kathy Rosdick from the Planning Office, and Renee Lamas for all of their collaboration on that the last couple days, I know we've been going back and forth, so I want to thank you for that. And that's all I have to report today. I lied, I have one more thing. I want to congratulate Collegiate Academy. If anyone didn't see this the other day, the Collegiate Academy had a group of students that presented, they were invited to present at the United Nations, and I think that that was a very high honor for children, young people from the City of Erie to be invited to come up with solutions to global problems. I don't think, I mean, it didn't get as much coverage as I would have liked to have seen, and I work with these kids every day, but I'm very, very proud of them, and I wanted to recognize them publicly today. So congratulations to the students of Collegiate Academy and their teacher for doing such a good job on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. Madam President had to step out for the rest of the meeting, so we'll just continue with our committee reports. Ms. Allen, please.
Thank you, I'm the liaison to the Neighborhood Watches, so I've been trying to go to as many watch meetings as possible, to at least let people know I'll be accessible, even if I don't get to every single meeting every single month. There's some really good things happening with Neighborhood Watch. At the Robbins Blast Neighborhood Meeting, Michael Outlaw came and spoke about his role in, I don't want to say, building bridges between the community and the police. He told his own personal story of loss. Last night I was at the Eagle, the Eagles Neighborhood Watch, which is the Eagles one on the west side, there's also an Eagle Neighborhood Watch on the east side, and there was good discussion there about moving the meetings back to a church to include more people, but I was really impressed by the police officer, Jamie, I forget his last name, he's at all the Neighborhood Watches, and he talked about the police chief's commitment to community policing. The Neighborhood Watch people talked about going door-to-door to get more people involved in Neighborhood Watch, and the police officer said, "Let us know when you're going to do this, because I would like to be there going door-to-door introducing myself." So there's some really good things happening with Neighborhood Watch, and also with improving police-community relations. It was really a joy to, to see that, that commitment. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Counselman Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, no report.
Counselman Kwiatowski.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
It doesn't really have a ring to it.
I like to report as liaison to the Airport Authority, I had the pleasure of attending their last meeting, and although it's not the news we always want to hear, at least there's some plans in effect to increase the seatage capacity coming into Erie with larger aircraft. Problem now being that the airlines are going to service their main airlines, their airports first, and Erie will be a beneficiary later down the line, but there are plans to increase the seat capacity, which will help, and hopefully, as their ongoing work and efforts to get more destinations such as LaGuardia, or increase the number of options going in and out of our present cities, it makes it a lot better. If you've seen what happened during the holiday, I was very pleased that we actually fared pretty well in the number of flights that were canceled compared to the volume of snow we got, and I was amazed to learn that besides all the plowing they did, they have to hand dig out every one of those lights. So my, I plan on honoring the Airport Authority workers' later meeting to thank them for their hard efforts in keeping the airport open on Christmas, as my son-in-law was a beneficiary, as he came in very, very late, but at least he came in. I had the pleasure of attending the O&amp;E Pension Meeting, their fund is doing very well, and the Fire Department, yesterday I attended their pension fund meeting, they added 11.1 million to the corpus of the fund in the last year to date, and I know everybody's watching the stock market and getting real antsy and nervous. Just remember that the three, well, actually four boards that operate out of this city have done great work in making sure that the funds are well diversified and well positioned to take both the front side and the backside of any market situation. And even during the darkest days of the Great Recession, or the Minor Depression, however we wanted to word it, even with the loss we took, we gained all that money back, and eventually recovered, you know, did a great job, so I have full faith and confidence in them. And I'd like to mention also the land bank, this council many, well, a few years ago, under the previous administration, has been pushing the land bank, so we're very serious about the land bank. We know that this is a tool that we need in the city, because we are the one that has the most to gain out of a land bank. It's time that we stop talking and start walking, and I think that's what this council did, and we're serious. So we would like to work with the county, but at the same time, we're serious about moving forward, and we don't want any more delays. As for LERTA, I had a talk with a gentleman that spoke today, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about LERTA. While a lot of people don't want to go into LERTA, just remember that it was a few years ago that Erie Insurance was faced with a very difficult situation, and could easily packed up their bags and moved anywhere else in the country, perhaps Delaware, where it's more beneficial to corporations, but they chose to stay due to the hard work of their board and Tom Hagan to invest in Erie. Now it came at a cost, Keystone Grants, LERTAs back then, and I remember even back then, people were arguing about, "Oh, we're giving away the farm." But today, you have a corporation that has not only renovated the neighborhood, provided more jobs, hired minorities, worked, working towards more construction projects, increasing their footprint in the downtown area, and I don't think, you know, if that's what it takes, we have to do it, because everybody's saying, "Well, look at Erie, you were behind, look at Texas." They're offering incentives bigger than we're offering. So, you know, we got Smith Provision to locate Erie based on some LERTAs. It's going to cost us, yes, we're going to have to look at 2019, 2020, before we get maybe our dime back, but we haven't talked to the administration yet. We don't know what form it's going to take, we're going to have discussions with them, and we can adjust it, we can have a sliding scale, we can slide back to a five or seven-year plan, but it's just as important for the neighborhoods that are eliminated now to have the chance to improve their neighborhoods as it is for the areas that are presently qualified. So yes, we have to, if we're going to go up against the south, and yes, eastern Pennsylvania, we're going to have to be very proactive in how we do this, and so we're going to have to come up with some plans. And finally, and then I'll be done, I'd like to say that I admire everybody that came out today about the bridge, and if you're truly concerned about the east side, then I'm going to work hard to, what I think would make more sense, because what really killed McBride Viaduct was the east side connector. When that bridge went in, the paperwork was signed and sealed on that, because we didn't maintain the bridge when we could have. Now that we're in worse shape, we're not going to maintain it, we know that, we don't even have a paving contract in two years. But I think what would make more sense is if we build a bridge somewhere west of Franklin Avenue, and somewhere east of McBride, to cut that great divide that right now divides the east side. That's what I'm in favor of, and I'll work with my legislators on a state and federal level to see that that happens. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schoff.
I want to thank everyone who came today, and all of you who are staying till the end. You all had something important to say, and I'm disappointed in the way that it went. I am hoping that we can work with the east side residents in building up the neighborhoods with better communication, and I do a lot of computer work, and there's a website, I think it's called Strong Towns, and it talks about bikeability, pedestrian, walkways. To me, I'm a walker, I gave my car to my daughter one time for over a year, and I invested in walking, and you build your spirit when you walk, and I am disappointed that the McBride Viaduct is not being saved. However, I am with all the people of Erie in rebuilding hope for us collectively, and so I will work in bringing about positive change. Thank you.
Thank you. Only comment I have is, very, very tough decision we had to make today, of course, it wasn't, maybe not the most popular one, but this has been going on for a long time, it's been a discussion for a very long time. Change is tough, no matter whether it's in the city, or whether it's in your own family, but it was just time that we move forward and move on. Thank you. Ms. Comptroller.
I don't have any report, other than next week, there'll be an aggregate board meeting, and we'll be able to bring some information back at the next council meeting about how the funds have been doing, and the offices started working on the state report that's required to be completed by the end of March, so I'll keep you posted on that, and that's it.
Thank you, keep up the good work. Administration?
Thank you, I just wanted to comment that with our city planner on board, we've been working on the Erie Refocused forums that will be conducted, and more will be coming out on that very soon, but basically there will be forums across the city and neighborhood planning that will be in on the east side, and I just wanted to let you know about that, but more will be coming out soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, I believe we can adjourn.
Okay, City Council adjourns at 12:14. Ms. Arrington, Mr. Al, Mrs. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.